It's enough.
I had a piece of one town.
With onions, really?
Yeah.
Which ever, what do you want?
You took care of it.
On Zoom, stand somewhere or does it?
Still, they, we have a camera.
This way? Maybe a little bit. Or stand right front of me. Do I stand?
Yeah.
Right here? Right. Okay. Should I hold it here? Just right, to pick it up? Okay. Great. Okay, well, thank you all for inviting me to talk a little about our hospital and our plans. And I'm sure many of you have heard something to be put out there to the community. Just wanted to thank you on the CEO of Local Harbor Hospital. I've been there, been here in our communities for four years since before the pandemic. And I have three kids. We're all young kids in school and excited to be here today, part of our hospital and our community. So a big thing that we've been planning for the last few verses is for the future, looking at our hospital and knowing that our current facility is over seven years old. And so as our hospital board and our commissioners are all publicly elected, we're a public hospital. We're owned by a community here. We have, when they hired me, that was specifically, they asked me, what do we need about our facility? We need to look at our facility, hire some consultants, hire some engineers, figure out what to do with it. Do we need to replace it? Do we need to remodel it? You know, what needs to happen? So this has been going on for the last, since I was hired here. I want to say a little more about some of them, so you can go to the next slide. So ultimately, small rural hospitals is my passion. I came from a small rural hospital in Texas. I was there for six years as a CEO. And it was all about delivering more local care. Because just as where I came from, it was very isolated, seventy plus miles to drive anywhere to get care. Similar here, long drive, over an hour often to go to Olympia or other places, Seattle, Portland, even farther. And so we want to deliver the highest quality care locally, so we can reduce the amount of driving out of our area. We also want to provide more careers. We know that people are raised here, they're born here, they want to stay here, they want to come back here. We want to grow our community, we want to provide opportunities. So that that growth of additional services and more care locally also brings more careers. So it's really important to us. And ultimately, we want to have a hospital that lasts for many, many generations. Kids, grandkids, great kids, we want everybody to benefit from this moving forward. So I also want to mention at this point that we are different from the larger facilities in how our individual patients are treating them. Not to disparage how the large facilities, they do the best they can. But honestly, the volume of the number of patients that are going through Providence St. Peters or these larger facilities is often sometimes too much even for them to handle. So people often feel like a number are going through that. And I just wanted to make the point that here at our hospital, we treat everybody like family. You know, we see people in the grocery store, we see people around it. We know our patients really well. As an example, I've shared this a few times, a patient recently told me and gave me permission that I could share this. She had been in our hospital two other times and she credited us for saving her life both of those times. And she mentioned that there was another time, a third time recently, where Dr. Pollard was her physician and Dr. Pollard told her, you need to come into the hospital and you need to stay overnight for a few nights to get better. You're not going to get better unless you come into the hospital. So she convinced her to come into the hospital. And that patient was reluctant because she knew that her ninety year old aunt was scheduled to come and visit her. And she was worried she came into the hospital, she wouldn't get that opportunity. And that may be the only opportunity she got to visit with her aunt. So we were, we knew that, we worked with the patient, we were able to allow her aunt to continue to come up and visit her in the hospital. Our nurses went above and beyond, they took it upon themselves to make it really special for her. They brought tea, they made a really wonderful memorable experience. And she's still talking about that experience today. That's the type of experience that you're not going to get in the long run. So they just simply don't have time, there's just too many people to take care of. So great thing is we can add a little individualized, personalized touch here to our patients that makes a big difference. Go to the next slide. Okay, so recently, every three years, we're required to do what's called a community health needs assessment. And that's under the Affordable Care Act, we're required to do that. And so we hire a group, they come and they talk to the local community stakeholders. They also look at benchmark data for, you know, for example, how many healthcare providers we have per thousand population. They look at a lot of medical data that's out there. They want to make sure that our community health needs are being met, right? So they do this analysis and they say, okay, here are the top needs for your area. You need to make sure and address them. We also have to write out an implementation plan of how we're going to address that. We have, this is all public documents posted on our website. So in this community health needs assessment that covers twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, in this document, it says the top three needs. One is that there's a lack of specialty care. That's number one. Number two, there's a lack of primary care. And number three was a lack of transportation, there's a transportation issue. Which really, if you think about it, all three of those issues make sense given our rural nature. Nothing out of the normal for a small rural community that will get isolated from the larger areas. And so we want to deliver on all three of those. And by bringing more care local, adding some more specialties to this new facility that we're planning, we're able to bring more, more specialty care here, meet some of the specialty care issues. The top three specialty care referrals are going out of the area, orthopedic surgery, chemotherapy, and cardiology. So those three, so, so those are three that work hard, you know, breeding this new facility. And then for primary care, what they found was that we're two primary care providers short of where we should be as in the North Austin County. So per thousand, the population, we're about two primary care providers short. And then the third thing was transportation. So if we feel, we feel if we can meet the specialty care issue by bringing more care local and bringing more, more primary care providers, two more primary care providers, then again, that's more care delivered local, so people don't have to drive as much out of town. So again, meeting, reducing the need to drive out of town, reducing the issue with the lack of transportation. We realize we can't completely eliminate it, people are going to drive out for other things, we understand that. We realize we can't be everything to all people. We're probably never going to have brain surgery or, or heart surgery. But can we take what we're currently offering and then add a few services to that to help reduce the burden on people having to drive out of the area? So and then the last piece of all this is the current building, it's just, it's just old. The current useful life from, according to the center of Medicare and Medicaid, average useful life of a hospital is forty years. Most people make it last past that to fifty years. We're at seventy years. So to us, it's time. And we know that people don't want to pay more and get the exact same thing they got before. So we feel like by simply asking the community to just replace what we currently have without any, without any new services, without any additional space, they're paying more and just getting the same thing. So in this, this way, with this, this gives us an opportunity to replace the facility, but also to provide more space so that we can add some new services. And currently, we're having issues even just with the current services, just the fact we have to send more building. So this is, I mentioned these services previously that we're looking to add. Those top three are not, we're not limited to those three. We hope to have an outpatient specialty clinic to have more specialties come in. When I, where I came from in Texas, like I mentioned, we were seventy miles away from any, any area. However, despite that, we had a specialty clinic where we had providers driving from, it was actually Abilene, Texas, they were driving seventy miles. And so we had nephrology, we had cardiology, we had a number of different specialties, podiatry, we had a cataract surgeon. So I'm not saying everything is, is replicable. I'm not saying that we can exactly copy that here, but we hope to bring more specialties in and a visibility rotating specialist spaces. I've seen that work in another rural location, I think it could work here too. And so just to kind of delve into that a little bit more, it's not so much, you know, people, some of the criticism online, so we can build it, they will come, that's not what we're, what we're talking about. We've already started a lot of work on this. So the first thing is in cardiology, we have a contract that's signed now by both parties that's due to start in the middle of this year. Right now, we're just working with insurance companies to get the cardiologist to work. And then they can start. And right now, we have a clinic that is full on four days a week. Generally, they rotate, so our providers work four days a week. So generally, on a Monday or on a Friday, they offset, we have an extra space there. So we potentially have a space for a cardiologist to come in on a Monday, for example. So we're looking at one day a week for cardiology. We're also looking at a, this one is not signed yet, but we're working through a proposal for a company to do some pain management. So we're working on that for a Friday. So however, if you want to expand to have more days of the week, besides just one day a week for cardiology, we have no space. So with the new facility, we can have more space to offer more days to cardiologists. So that's a real example of things that we actually have in the works now, not just some hopeful dream, I think that sometimes you hear people online. But we do, we do actually have plans for cardiology, orthopedic surgery. We know that Ocean Beach has had in the past a orthopedic surgeon. We're interested in sharing that orthopedic surgeon between the two facilities. I know that Ricky was close to retirement last time I checked. And so we want to work with them as that occurs to have someone that can be shared between the two facilities. And then for chemotherapy, we are almost finished with our final certification phase of our IV cleaner. This is where you mix chemotherapy drugs and prepare those. It's the most expensive piece of the whole chemotherapy setup and it's most difficult to certify. We're almost complete with that, that certification process. Once that occurs and we kind of get that process under our belt for a little bit prior to our move over to new facility, we plan on moving all of that over to our new facility and then getting a contract with an oncologist to do chemotherapy. Currently, we don't have an IV infusion suite in our, in our hospital. In the new facility, that's in the plans for an IV infusion suite. So, you know, you may have a friend or family member or someone down the road who has cancer, who's getting chemotherapy, having to drive sometimes multiple times a week out of town. Imagine if they can get that here locally. So that's, that's in our plans and we think that's really important to the community. So that's just a little bit about it. And we hope to add other specialties as well. And then it's those additional services provide, you know, increase in the number of jobs we're able to provide to the community. It's more local care, yes, also more, more careers for, for what? We love to work with all of the, the school districts, developing more programs for nursing, as we train from CNAs to MAs. And for example, we have a lady right now, who's an RN, she's working in our clinic and she wants to be a nurse practitioner and she wants to come back and practice here. But right now, we don't have space for her to practice. So that, so those types of investments in the infrastructure here are going to pay dividends by people wanting to come back and actually have the place to practice, opportunity. So let's go to the next slide. And then everyone who wants to know about the costs, you know, we wish we could just provide everything, all of this at no cost. However, there is a cost with these things. We, sometimes people say, well, you're owned by the community, a publicly elected board. Some people say, does that mean all of your funding comes from the community? No, that actually the tax funding that we receive currently is only two percent of our overall operating budget. Most of our funds come from Medicare, Medicaid, insurance companies when people come in. Okay, so we, our budget does not come from taxpayers. It comes from Medicare, Medicaid, the services people use. We do receive a, a, a small portion of tax revenue. Now with this facility, the plan, and this will be on the ballot in the February thirteenth election, if it's approved, then it would add fifteen dollars per month, per hundred thousand. So if we change the, we put this up there as fifteen dollars a month per hundred thousand to make the math easy. But in reality, what it'll be on the ballot is a dollar sixty-six per thousand on an annual basis. So we know people see it that way too. We also know some people are getting it put into escrow and every month. So we want people to look at it that way too. So either way, you kind of it's a dollar sixty-six per thousand or fifteen dollars per hundred thousand. These are estimates based on five and a half, five and a half percent interest rate. We set a pretty high percent interest rate at the time, but knowing that once this is set, probably in the fall of this year, those interest rates will most likely be lower and that hopefully will be even lower than what it is now. But so we look at that as, you know, the cost of a half a tank of gas that gets to Olympia backs or Olympia and back is about, you know, forty-five, fifty dollars. And if we can reduce the amount of trips going up to Olympia, then we've just been a wash there, maybe we save you some money. So for costs of taking a gas, you know, you can get a new hospital here. Again, it's forty-six million dollars is the total bond. So as sometimes feedback has been, well, if our assessed value goes up, doesn't mean our taxes go up. And that's not the case. So as the assessed values go up, the dollar per thousand actually goes down because we're, we're, we have a fixed amount every year, we're trying to pay off on that bond. So doesn't the valuation, the, the amount reflect has to equal what we're, what we're trying to pay off them. So it doesn't, doesn't go up, the assessed settlement goes up. So I know that's going to be for people. And then those tax dollars, unlike state or federal dollars, when you pay those dollars, you, you, sometimes it's hard to have accountability for each dollar for dollar. Where does that end up? People don't know if I pay state taxes or federal taxes, where, you know, how does that get used? And sometimes it's hard to see where that, how that's going to be. The great thing is all, a hundred percent of that money stays local. Okay, so it stays into that facility and something you can see, touch, feel. You receive services and benefits that for, for many generations to come. So yes, it's a thirty year bond, but we're talking fifty, seventy years of building a facility that's going to last a long time, even past when it's all paid off. So think about that too. And then we also know, we know it's a, it's a big tax burden onto the, onto our local community. But those taxes that people pay every year, you come in and use our services, we're one of the few facilities in state, not, not many public hospital districts offer this. It's just us and just one or two other facilities that also allow you to take benefit of, say, hey, you know, we'll write that off as your hospital bill. So if you pay five hundred dollars in taxes, you bring in that and we'll fill out this form and then you take five hundred dollars off your, off your hospital bill. So, but that's okay. All right, next slide. Okay, this is just a short little video clip. If the, if the audio doesn't work, we'll skip past it, but it's, it's from our commissioner. Whatever. It's time to, what are our commissioners and then also patients. So we have a growing, growing demand even just for what we're currently offering. So I want to kind of share some of those numbers to go to the next slide. So we've seen some double digit growth in all of these areas over the last three years. And even in our emergency room visits, since last year, we have one month, we topped five hundred visits a month. We've never reached that. Our year, did this heavily grow, we're seeing all go up there. And in all of these areas, we've seen twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, depending on the service line, that we've seen some major growth. So we're running out of space just for what we're currently doing. Doing, the facility was designed seventy years ago and hospitals that were built and designed in the fifties were designed more for inpatient care. Whereas everything in that, all that time is now shifted mostly to outpatient. And inpatient will never go away, but most of the care analysis of outpatient in those spaces, we just, we're just running everything. So. Now this is a little bit of our positions, but if it works, great. So I want to stop here and just open up for questions, but this is the, the land, the site that our hospital commissioners, all that's decided to purchase, to build a hospital on. This was decided on for a number of reasons and factors. One, being that we wanted somewhere like flooded, connected to local utilities. That was in the city limits, that was somewhere that was out of the flood and it's a tsunami zone. Took us over a year and a half to find a piece of property. Looks on, on the market, couldn't find anything on the market and had to go off the market and try to talk to local property owners to find people that found the piece. That was already partially developed and had already had some costs already sunk into the site. But the site is unique because we'll also have access to one-on-one, we'll be able to have access right directly to one-on-one, that'll be the main access point. And then we'll also have access to Raymond Southland Highway. And that will give us in case of flooding on one-on-one, we'll be able to have that back entry as well. We know that Raymond Southland Highway is not a good road. We're able to work with the, the county on the south end to, to, you know, work on some infrastructure grants and other things that we can procure to help that portion of the road. Yeah. Questions?
I guess I'll fire a couple off.
Sure, go for it.
I guess I got. Messaging part. Total cost is estimated to be somewhere ninety-two million.
Ninety-two, yeah.
So you've got to go out and find financing for half of it.
Yes, yes, so.
And so I guess when the messaging part for me, that ought to be part of the message. That, because I've seen people kind of come under threats and kind of come after that part of it. And it's kind of dismissive, like, don't, don't talk about the other part. Don't talk about the other forty-eight million, talk about the forty-six. And I get if you pass the forty-six, it's going to be easier to go after this rather mighty, I get that. But I think as, full, full disclosure upfront is, this is a ninety-four, ninety-five million dollar project. And how are we going to do it? Debt is debt. Debt costs and debt has risk. I want to be convinced that the hospital has taken it in steps to figure out what's costing and risk. The assessor tried to put that piece. Yeah, I'll be as kind of diverse as I can, kind of ham handedly out there. But there is a present cost and there is a future cost of this project, right? And interest, so principal and interest over time.
Sure.
Mounts up. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the messaging just being forty-six million. And let's kind of, let's not worry about the rest, we'll get there at some point in time. But that, I guess that's my comment. I think it's, I think for full disclosure of this project, those types of things need to be talked about in these meetings. You need to be out in some publication somewhere, so people know that. Because if you talk to people, I've talked to people down all the meetings and they go, what's a forty-six valve? It's forty-six million dollar project.
Yes.
And so one side of the coin, you'd say the messaging's been pretty good that way. I guess the other side of the coin is, that's not the full picture.
Sure.
So that's my.
Can I explain a little bit? I go for it. Okay, all right. So you're right, the total cost for the facility is ninety-two million. And the initial cost back from the architects, back in the planning stages was over a hundred million. We had to go back and, you know, like at all projects, you cross out a bunch of things. You try to pair it back some to get it, or it was even somewhat feasible. The hospital did a debt capacity, a financial feasibility study to figure out how much of this could we, we could take on. And we decided we could take on half of it. So we've gone out to taxpayers for forty-six million. On our half, yes, we, we have to get financing, whether that's through revenue bonds, whether that's through straight loan financing for the other half. When we occur that financing, how we pay that back is through increased Medicare payments. So because we're a critical access hospital, our hospital, we see, we'll be able to take that cost, those loan payments, and send in a cost report to Medicare because we're critical access hospital staff and that will increase our reimbursement for Medicare, Medicaid. So essentially, we'll be able to accelerate the depreciation on the new building earlier so that we can account for those costs. So we'll be able to fund our half through increased Medicare reimbursement. So when we're looking at the financial feasibility study, all of that's taken into account. So essentially, that half is not a burn. I know it seems like a burn, it's, it works publicly owned hospital and people think, well, you default on the debt, you can, you know, then you have to go back out. That's not true. Previously, previously, when Bruce Walker, others were on the board, we were not a critical access hospital. That was an act passed in nineteen ninety-six. Anyway, so yes, absolutely, back then, it was a PPE, it was a prospective payment service hospital, was not a critical access. Now it is. So every year, we submit a cost report to Medicare, they look at our cost, we reverse on that hundred percent of cost plus one percent. We're able to, depending on what those departments are, whether it's in the inpatient unit, whether it's, I think physician payment, physician payments are a little less. So depending on that, how that they assess that is how we'll reimburse. But we're essentially, we're able to take that loan payment that we make every year as a part of our cost and get enhanced reimbursement for Medicare payment that we need. So there's no risk of defaulting or on our end of that debt. So if that makes sense. So when we say forty-six millions, that this is the cost of the taxpayer, that's true because the other forty-six million is paid by Medicare. So now, if, if, if people stop coming to our hospital. So now, if, if people stop coming to our hospital altogether, you know, then that's a risk, right? If we have a huge reduction in volume, there's what's called a low volume adjustment that can partially offset that. We can receive that. But yes, we continue to have to have services to, to meet that. So that's a risk. We have to continue to provide insurance. But no, that's, that's, I mean, that's a point of insight. We've talked a lot about that with people in these public forums. People brought that up. Yes, it's 92 million. On the bond, on the election that's going out there, on the actual framework, it says the bond at 92 million dollars, it says that in the, in the, in the framework. So that's actually in the bond paper too. But yes, I understand that. We just want, want to put out there and say, hey, this is a 92 million dollars hospital. You're funding 100%, which is not, not exactly true. It's the 46 million.
Well, they are funded 100%. I've been through the, if they're paying for the building, it's going to pay the, pay the bill.
Right.
I mean, it's money coming out of the hospital's pocket to pay the.
Right.
They are paying it. They are paying it. There is a risk. I'm staying in the messaging. To me, it's.
Okay. That's, that's good feedback to go to try to communicate that out. Yep.
How much can you increase the hospital bills for a percentage? Say, are you? When hospital bills are already, just probably find out if there are any fees before they're paying off the loan.
You mean like, for example, like we were going to, we're going to increase people? No. So, so we have contracts with Medicare, Medicaid, but also with other insurers as well. That clearly defined a certain, a set of CPT codes, a set of charge codes, a set of, that we're allowed to. So we can't just arbitrarily put an increase in there because the insurance companies won't, won't pay that. They, they'll just, they'll decrease. They're not going to pay. They pay what they're going to pay and we have to take what's called the contractual adjustment off of that. So there's no one for dollar for dollar increase. So they only allow every year for the cost of inflation. Let's say it's 2% or 3% that year. They say, okay, they'll let you increase 3% because of inflation. They're not going to let you add on an additional adjustment for, to pay for the hospitals. That additional funding comes from Medicaid because we're a critical access hospital, but it doesn't come from the other private insurers. It doesn't come in the cost of us charging people more money or anything that, it, it comes at the end of the year in a cost report settlement. So it's not that extra cost, that extra reimbursement for Medicare is not passed on to the, to the individual Medicare beneficiaries.
Are they individual patients?
The individual patients. Yeah.
So I just was curious about the impact, and this might be Eric too, I don't know. The impact of having this project with the hospital, because I am fasted, I don't know. Does the hospital want to aim for the infrastructure expansion to go to services or is this?
We have, usually we don't. It's low now. I can tell you.
And that's on the development side of like.
I can tell you that, no, the slide's not up there right now, but those, the front entrance and the back entrance are included in the, in the cost of the project. Okay. So the front driveway was quite long and the back, and it's all part of the project. And we'll be able to pull utilities, potentially what we're looking at is maybe pulling utilities from 101 and connecting with Raymond's up then. Creating a loop that hopefully will strengthen the whole area.
There may.
Yeah. 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 And those plots along that, there are some, some, some plots along that front area that will now have utilities to up here.
And then the other question I had was, one of the things that, that we struggled with before any hospital change was finding housing for the contractors to come in in the first place. It wasn't that we couldn't find the contractors. We didn't have any space for them to sweep, to sweep. Is that something that's going to go into this new design? Is there some, I don't, I don't know how you would do it with building a hospital, but is there like something where there's like temporary rooms or some type of acts we're seeing to help?
We have some, some units that we rent, but yeah, we're going to have to, that's going to be a challenge. We're going to have to work with the local, with, with contractors. When we bring in a general contractor and they will look with, work with local contractors as well. Be able to do in 2024, view the roads and then also in 2424, work with people like everyone around here. South Bend, our local, like our providers, our nurses, the community to help design the facility in 2024. And then 2025, we'll break ground and then, and then it'll be done by 2026. But, yeah, that's, I said that right.
So is that, is that a piece, like temporary housing or the rooms or something like that being thought about as far as staffing?
Because I, I just. Right. Oh, you mean for staffing?
Yeah. So I mean, I, I get about 15, every time you guys get a new contractor up there, I get five or six calls trying to find a space. And so we expand these services and we add the extra services to this and we're getting more specialists in here that are only traveling for one or two days. This is not a drive late from community, especially if you work eight hours. You're going to stay for the night.
So when you said contractor, I thought you were talking about construction.
No, I meant like your subcontractor.
Yeah. So we have, we do have housing for, we are, we have housing now for temporary nurses, for travel nurses, all the doctors. Generally, when we recruit a new physician, we give them three months of housing so that gets some time to find housing near locally. So we work with them.
And are you building that, so you're building that into this project?
Yeah, we're building that into, you know, our plans as going forward. And we're, we want to work also with, you know, some staff, others have brought up, you know, for example, daycare or the things like that. We don't necessarily have the expertise to, to run a daycare because that's not the business that we're in, but we want to work with others, whether it's grants, other things to bring in local contractors to do daycare, whatever we do to help support the area, to support our staff. So we're going to absolutely have heavily involved in that. So most of the, especially the kind of rotating specialists, so not necessarily they're going to live here most of the time. Those are going to be rotating in from other areas. For example, the cardio ultra group we contracted with, they're already going to, they're going to Summit Pacific, they're going to Mason. And, you know, they're, they're traveling around the Gris, Gris Harvester, day here, day there, day there. Generally how I've seen it for rotating specialists. So onboarding and bringing on two of these primary care providers, that's not a huge burden we have helping for those two people. But yeah, we're going to, those are challenges. We're going to have to work on. We don't see this, when we're looking at growing our, our service lines, growing our, you're talking maybe 20, 30% growth, but not so much though that it's going to be so large what we're going to. But it's, it's definitely a challenging role, just like treatment is, but. Go ahead.
A couple of things. Chief Matlock, Matlock wasn't able to be here tonight and he asked me if there's any plans for security worked into the real hospital. And what your plans are for security.
Sure. We're going to have a modern facility that has all the modern enhancements and security that we don't currently have. So we have to have, you know, outside cameras, potentially a security guard if it comes to that, you know, perhaps more security that we don't have as much as we wish we had right now. So. Good question. My understanding is that Dave, but you know, I don't know how long that's been on, on the books here, but we'll be looking at that too. Like, I understand that that's just, and I, I don't even think that's making some operations. I don't know exactly why that's on there, but it's a very small amount, right? Yeah. We'll consider, yeah, looking at that. So.
I was just curious. And yes, that's it. I was just going to, I'll talk to her about that. I sat on it with the healthcare board and I keep wondering, so you can go to the local to do. We feel okay just. Let's see from insurance. I don't know how that works. I also know how hospitals.
I just want to tell you, how many, this is. How do you, how do you ensure that when your specialty serves sufficient, you're betting a bunch on that?
Sure.
Yeah. You fill, you fill that book. How does, how does that work?
That's the contractual relationship between them will be set minimums and reset those standards in there. And for example, this group that's coming, they're very, say, they're, they're working, they're hungry. They're, they're, they're young. They want to build their practice. They're going around and trying to bring in more, more patients into a practice. Yeah, those are, they're safeguards we put into the contract to make sure that they're paid based on how many volume. And if they exceed that volume, they can have another day, things like that. So.
But you, you guarantee it some amount of show.
Right. Upfront. And then as they, as they build the volume and as they build their.
Yeah, Chris, if you were trying to get to see a party all of this. Wait, like three months, four months to be able to see them.
I've never.
When you're locally and I'm shooting door. Well. When you never played, like maybe a lego.
Well, those three are ones that we looked, we did some market research to figure out which, how many referrals are going out of the area by specialty. And those were the top three that were going out of the exam. So we tried to pick ones that we knew.
Yeah.
Were getting out.
You know, the other thing you might have just talked to the president.
We're not.
Yeah, that's a tough one to break.
Absolutely. Well, and, and you know, we looked at it this way, that, you know, it's either build the hospital, just replace it as it is with all the current services. Don't add anything new and people have to pay for that and pay, pay more or just get the same thing or pay more and you actually get more. So, you know, it's kind of a, if we're going to replace it, the facility may, may restructure it and sign it so we can have space to add offices. So, yeah.
So I've heard you talk about cardiology, chemotherapy and orthopedics. They're all great. Um, so my question is about aesthetics. Because the growing community, we have families, it's a great place to raise families.
Sure.
Not a great place to get, get into care or have a baby. You have to travel either to Aberdeen, like what I did, or Olympia. And correct me if I'm wrong. It's been a while since I had kids. I mean, I had kids, but I actually gave birth. It's been a while. Um, is it still that way? Do we have any plans to bring in the obstetrics here to this community? Because how do you grow a community? How do you continue having growing families?
True.
With no ability to have babies here? I mean, people have to travel on these roads when it's icy, when we have, you know, winter storms, you're giving birth, you're giving birth. You're either going to, you're going to travel those roads. And I know somebody who gave birth on the Aberdeen highway. So like literally in the car on the Aberdeen highway. So.
That's a very, very relevant need. And I, I completely agree with that assessment. So a few things. One, to your example, we, a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was a month ago now, we had a, a patient that had an emergency C-section in our, in our ER that we performed. And so, and both mom and baby were, were, were healthy and good. So we're, we've done that before in our ER, but we certainly would love to have OB. I would love to have OB on this new facility. We are designing it and we did, when we're looking at the square footage and how much square footage is, we laid out areas in case we needed to add on to it or we needed to move space to be flexible on the inside that we could grow with the change in demands over the next 50 to 70 years. So we could change, change with that. So now to the point about OB and rural areas, that is a, that's it. Rural areas are what they call like the medical desert for OB and that's across the nation. It's not just here. We have the same problem in Texas. And the reason is because Medicaid reimbursement for deliveries is so low and it's paid on a volume basis. So that's sort of your point. You know, looking at deliveries, so you know, let's say we have you know, 20 deliveries in a month, you know, how many per week is that? It's not fair to any today. So we would need to average quite a few more deliveries to make it work based on, on that. I personally, what needs to happen is on the legislative front, they need to allocate funding for the, for OB in rural areas. They need to find ways to change the payment structure for, for OB in rural areas because simply, you know, two deliveries a week or whatever is not, is not enough to pay or an OB physician to be here locally in the area. The cost of malpractice and then they're, they have to be performing more, more deliveries than that. It's don't have enough volume. And that's the case nationwide. Many rural hospitals have shut down their OB because they were just, it was causing their, the hospitals to go out of business or they were losing so much money because it's, again, it's based on, our payment is based on volume. And if there's no volume in that service, then there's, there's not enough to support. We would love to have it and, and hopefully that will change legislatively so that rural, rural facilities can receive higher payments for, for OB. But I completely support. I agree because where women go over their babies, it's generally where their whole family receives care for generations to come. And so we would love that to be here, but fortunately, the pay, right now, the payment methodology just doesn't favor rural. And in fact, I was talking with the CEO of the hospital in Forbes recently and they're, they're, they have OB, but they're, they're about ready to close it because they just don't have any money. It's losing money left and right. And so they're one of the last rural that I know in Washington that has OB. Many of them are already closed. So something needs to change on the legislative front.
We're talking about, sorry, follow up.
Yeah.
Talking about the next 50 years.
Sure.
If it does change on that front.
Yes.
Would this hospital be able to support a, what do you call it? A birthing center?
Yeah. So we've made the, when we're lining up the square footage, we put blocks and say, okay, if, you know, ER had to expand or if lab had to expand, what could we push out? Could we push this out to a, an office building? We've made the inside flexible like that. We're looking at square footage and the placement of things. And then also that, we've made space where we could add on to that. So we've made, made that space, but we also can't go ahead and build in the OB without, without knowing. So that's, that's the big question mark, where we can make it so that if it comes to that, we can make changes.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I know it's not the best that we, we love it, but it's right now.
So would you say that because of recognizing that facility count is 45, 46% of the age of 60s, this hospital, and it just seems like the specialties that you're kind of focused on and the areas you're focusing on are those geriatric related specialties, right? But I mean, I hate to be pressed, but in 20 years, those people are going to be gone and their younger families are going to be here trying to have babies or those other specialty care. So I, you know, I think in fact, what we're kind of looking at is we're looking at the geriatric needs that we know that are here, put it right now for the next 10 years. And then leaving the flex place to build that family medical center once the generation moves.
We know, we know that healthcare is going to change over time. So we have to be flexible to make those changes.
But you're just kind of focusing in on that geriatric.
Right now we are. I mean, that's sort of a 25% population and that's the, the demographic that's projected to grow in. It's, it's 65,000. That's, who uses the hospital, the highest volume is 65,000. We hope to be able to adapt as well.
Okay. So we write up our questions here.
That's that one. And so our property values went up probably $50,000. That's priced over $50,000. That brings my, you know, my house to the property that I would, of course, not pay like $500 extra a year. You know, and, and I'm not wealthy. I don't, I, I know my parents aren't wealthy and I'm just wondering if that's sustainable. Like, are we going to be pricing people out of their home? So then there won't be anybody to pay the property taxes for this hospital. That's my concern. Cause that's a lot of money. I mean, may not seem like to a lot of people, but that's a lot of money to me. And I know it's a lot of money to my parents and I know it's a lot of money to other elderly people who own houses that all of a sudden have, you know, 200 more or 300 more. They have to pay a year all of a sudden. And that's, that's, that's kind of a big concern, I think, that a lot of people have.
Right. And we, we understand that, sure. We know that's, it's very tough and we understand that we're kind of in, in that rock and hard place of what we do now. We're looking at the facility about investing in the future. We, we do know that that's a, that's a big concern of the community. We, we do know that that's a, that's a big concern of the community, and and people are struggling with taxes and the higher assessments. However, we're kind of a place where we need to think about infrastructure for the next fifty, seventy years, and if we don't invest now, that cost isn't going to, it isn't going to go down. So if we wait a year, we wait two years, we wait five years, that cost is only going to get more expensive. It's, it's not a good.
In the meantime, are we pricing people out? I mean, we already have enough, a housing problem as it is, and you know, we have to, they, they're paying more taxes, they're paying more in Um inflation, they're paying more in all of these things, these are people on fixed incomes, are we pricing them out of their homes by, you know, by supporting this? And that, that's a huge concern, I think.
Heidi, I, I think interrupted, but we really, we need to move on, but I want to say that I think it's important that And maybe there are people that take advantage of this, but there are, there is an ability for people who are on fixed incomes with In a certain income level, they can go up to the accounting and get their property taxes lower. I did it for my son, my brother-in-law. I made a huge difference. He was struggling every single month, paying what he was paying Only because he didn't know. And there are other people out there that I know don't know.
Yeah.
And you can go up there and you can tip those lower, people who are probably paying today, they can barely afford it. And those people, and those people need to take advantage of those, those programs that are available. Do I want to pay it? No, I mean, I, my husband's wanting to retire, I'm already retired. This certainly, this helped really much for it. So I absolutely get it, and I don't need to interrupt. So if you wanted to finish, Chris has got another.
No, I'm done.
We're pushing on.
No, I'm done. I just, you know, and and if we could maybe put, if maybe you could put that out into the public, that would be, as part of that, that would be, I think, beneficial.
Not that I, I can stay from afar.
Financial, you guys do that in-house.
For the financial feasibility study, that was briefly, um I could spell it out, it's like WIP.
So they're, they're the firm.
There's a firm. Yes. So absolutely. Yep.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
Oh, I was just going to say, I would thank you for your time. Oh, no, I was just going to thank you, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your questions, and we know it's a real, um you know, it's a pressing topic in the community, and we know it's really difficult for taxpayers. You know, if there was any other way to find the funding, we would, we'd go about that. We are going after grants, but that's contingent upon the, the bond passing. Um certainly don't want to be a burden on the, on the community. I would just think about, so what, I have a, you know, a hundred and seventy staff And physicians, and they're currently operating in a, in a building that's seven years old and taking care of patients, which is More difficult because of the age of building, because of it's not set up for their success, and it's kind of a barrier for them. So if I'm thinking about them and the message, let's say, let's say it doesn't pass, you know, we'll continue to educate, and hopefully it will pass the second time or the third time. I think Lake Shalane took them four times. I think um, you know, I know I could talk about a number of other, other places that have fifty-five million dollar bonds, seventy-two million dollar bonds in Brewster, Fifty-fives in Quincy, a hundred and twenties in Fitz American, R forty-six is, is small in comparison to those. I know it's still a huge tax to the, to the taxpayer, but when I think about our staff, what message does it send to them if the community continues to vote it down, vote it down, vote it down? What that, what will happen is they will eventually go to other places that are investing in their future, that are investing in the careers, that are investing in healthcare in the community. I mean, that's just the fact. I mean, I find, when I hire a physician, or when I interview a physician and they come on site, I walk them around, I walk them around the seventy-year-old building. I walk them around the clinic and they ask, where's my office going to be? I say, well, currently we don't have an office space, you have to jam in here, we only have one exam room, and we have two providers in that one examiner. So I have to share and, you know, explain that to them. And so it makes it difficult for me to recruit physicians here. It makes it difficult to talk to staff, if staff come and complain about old building issues, and and I said, well, we can fix it, you know, there's Don't only put lipstick on a pig for so long, I mean, this, the, the facility is just old, and so we need to be thinking about staff and the physicians. If we want staff and physicians that are good here, then we have to think about them, and how can we help them be successful and invest in them? So that, that's, that's who I care about, you know, I, I have a hundred and seventy people that come and talk to me all the time about all the problems that are going on in the hospital, and I try to patch and fix, but At some point, we're going to have to invest in the facility, and whether it's me as a CEO, another CEO, or you know, years later, at some point, it's going to happen. Right now, we've done all these modeling, we figure now's the best time where we can afford it. You know, we don't know in five years if we're going to be able to afford this. Right now, we can, so, you know, we brought this forward.
Thank you.
I know, yeah. That was the most, the most questions we've tried in a while.
Well, a lot of no.
It's only cool like right here.
Yeah, it's like right.
Yeah.
It's in my, it's in my uh, underneath the uh, the knees there, yeah.
Well, that's good information.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that having that information about um being able to lower property taxes for on fixed income, I think that needs to get out.
Yeah.
If I can loan it in for my neighbor down the street, and maybe I'm a little bit higher, because I, I work a little bit.
I mean, they increased the.
Forty-three or forty-four.
Forty-three or forty-four.
Yeah. I think that. Well, it's really good to know, because, yes.
That's, that's a major, Maria, you know, pricing people out of their homes.
Some people own their homes already, but their, their major bill is the property tax, and this is going to increase that quite a bit. If they're on a very fixed income and don't have a lot of income, I mean, and then.
That's what, that's what concerns me, and that, that's a huge hit, and all of a sudden you're hitting with three hundred dollars.
And I know several people in that situation, people are afraid of it.
It's also been.
Which the government already.
Involved. Renters. Renters don't realize that homes they're renting, the prices are going to go up to cover the cost of the taxes.
So I'm going to bring it, that's a good point back to.
Okay.
Um it broke them a little bit distinctly, um and um So if anybody, um if there's any committees that you'd like to sit on, that maybe you aren't already on, um feel free to. So there, think about. Then um item number eight is we only save one application for the open town contribution. You can actually continue to say, take um applications in the next meeting, and We can do everything we have to do for the ones that. If, or some. Not something that we. But I think that we should um get some other applicants. We're all in agreement with that.
Yeah.
Be more.
Yeah. I get two options.
And it has to do with, I want to. I would.
Agreed.
Um so on the website and on Facebook, it says, close on January twelve, I know you're saying, open. Is there somewhere we can put it out there on the website? Officially, pretty put out on the website, you know, where the notice is. Um well, I did it on. My Facebook page isn't official, it's not the city's, uh you know, the, the notice when I went and clicked on it said, can we.
We can change it, but I put I city code, we can accept applicants up in.
Oh, I know, that was great. I just um feel like people, when they click and switch to get the application, they'll see closed.
Yeah, I, I just spoke to a couple of people today. But we're going to be able to. I know it's a big call, okay, okay. Got it, okay, all right.
And then it also says in the code, it says that even though it closes, that the city still can accept applications Beyond that point up until the next meeting.
I just think it'd be.
We will see.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um number nine. Two, there's a normal two, all I need in the town.
Yeah. Yeah, you can.
You did the same.
That would be, you know, conflict of interest. Do you want a second?
What happened?
Yeah.
Is Tony still? Yeah.
We have a forum.
Tony, you have to vote.
Few motions, I second.
At this point, just. We know, I think in favor, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
Tony?
You there?
Call it in.
It's fair, there he is.
I see him.
There we go.
Chief Didian had another meeting.
What's with the bags on the hydrants up there?
That was one of the water leaks.
No, there's, it's on. There's one at the school and then.
Uh they wouldn't cut the road, I, I.
Water's off at school, school will be closed, so.
They are really good at working.
That's all I have to say.
I know, that's what I thought.
It's like, well, what you got? What's coming?
Public comment on current agenda items? Frank, I had it in the chat, which we have.
Thank you, Craig.
Yes.
Go ahead. Yes.
Yep, we got it. Thank you, Craig.
Council comments? Future agenda topics? Hey.
Turn over the limit on them.
I, if there's no objection, I'll call this a later.
Okay. It's like, a fancy group.